Thank you. Good evening. We will officially start our budget hearing at 7:05 PM. Until then, I'm actually going to move to items by consensus. At 7:05, we will vote to enter our budget hearing. We will have a vote, then we will vote to close the budget hearing, move into our WHS student representative. Our, let's see, item C, approval of minutes, January 19th, 2022. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor.
I wasn't here, was it this meeting I was not present? It was the last meeting, so I'm abstaining, please.
Approval of 2223 school year calendar. This is our second reading. Motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Ragsdale, all in favor. That's unanimous. Warrants G17, 8 through 19, 20, 21, 22, 24, R17 through 24, L60 through 69, FS45, 47, 48, 49, 50. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Plowman, seconded by Mr. Fenely, all in favor. That's unanimous. We have CB02 and 03. Is there a motion? Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mrs. Plowman, all in favor. One abstention. Payroll ending 2222, 21622. Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor. Is that, okay.
No, abstaining. Is that sped?
Number, no, it's good. Payroll, yeah.
Payroll, yeah.
All right. That's unanimous. We have warrants sped 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26. Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor. And that is one abstention. All right. Fantastic. Or was it 7:05?
7:04.
Oh, perfect timing. I need a vote, a motion to enter into our budget hearing. Is there a motion, Mr. Fenely? Seconded by, thank you, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor. That is unanimous. All right.
Ms. Ingrisal, could you bring up the presentation for me, please? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attention. This evening, we are proceeding with the third installment, if you will, in the budget presentation for the fiscal year '23, or 2022, 2023. The presentation is in the school committee packet. And this evening, in compliance with Mass. General Law, this is the delivery of the presentation that is known as the public hearing of the budget and the budget plan to this point in time for the Wilmington Public Schools. All of this information is a committee, and the community has seen previously in our presentations. And this is just a, in essence, a summary. But this evening, the difference and the distinction is twofold. One, there is an opportunity for members of the community to comment on this budget plan. And two, it is looking for your vote of approval to proceed. So to start with some background and some context that is important to frame this budget picture. First off, the projected enrollment for the fiscal year '23 is 2,757 students in district. That obviously is our best guess. It's an estimate for the total number of students for next school year. But that's a key number around which we have shaped our respective planning, our resources, and our staffing. We are anticipating supporting 60 students that we will be required to educate out of district or out of the Wilmington Public Schools. And that'll further expand upon more in a few slides that follow. This budget plan continues to anticipate revenue sources from grants and state funding, as per as normal the case. In some of those cases, there are estimates. In others, we have a higher level of confidence in the actual number. But regardless, this, certainly, this budget plan also draws upon additional revenues to support our operations and services. And finally, this budget plan, as currently presented, has been positioned to allow us to align with professional staffing guidelines, as well as contractual commitments. This is a snapshot, a data that you have seen previously, but it is, it is an overview of our current enrollment. We draw upon this information from what we identify as the October 1st data. This is the actual report the Department of Education collects from public school districts and entities throughout the state. And so this, this reflects what our enrollment was as of October 1st. Of course, since that point in time, there could have been some adjustments, but for the most part, any would be minor. As is always the case, we, we do the very best we can to predict enrollment going forward. And this is a snapshot of what we are currently predicting for enrollment over the course of the next five years. Obviously, there's great variability that's possible with this. But at this point in time, based upon the analysis that we have historically with a view in the past, we have a good sense of what our typical retention rate is. And so it's, it's those variables and factors that allow for us to be able to reasonably predict numbers going, going out five years. Obviously, such things as housing development projects, an uptick in housing sales, and so on, can certainly impact these overall numbers. I think it's important to point out that this budget plan really, really supports an awful lot of aspects of our overall operations. And it's, I know, very quick to cut to the chase and the bottom line number. But if I may, just to bring some attention to a few important areas that this budget plan right now has incorporated in it. In terms of curriculum, obviously, a key component of the work that we do, teaching and learning. I won't go through all of these. We've talked about these in, in previous presentations. But just short, just shy of under $400,000 in this budget plan towards supporting curriculum, an important component, obviously, of the work that we do with our students throughout all of our eight schools. Also, with under the broad umbrella of curriculum, includes professional development. And here, you can see a snapshot, an overview, of just over $130,000 that currently has been earmarked within this budget plan to support professional development over a number of different areas and a number of different departments. Student support services is, as you know, the area that really helps support and attend to an awful lot of different services from special education, but much broader than that. Our social-emotional learning department falls under that department, as does 504 Services and many others. You can see here a snapshot of the, the plan right now going forward, under this Office of Student Support Services for a variety of things, including legal evaluations, occupational therapy, and the like. And you can see the current, current estimates that's a part of that plan here. Out-of-district placements, as mentioned at the outset. This budget plan right now includes the anticipation of 60 students that will be educated out of district. Of course, that can change. But right now, we have confidence in, in that overall number. And just to draw attention to what the current budgeted FY23 allocation is, how that compares to FY22. And you can see the breakdown there that includes public day tuitions, private day tuitions, residential tuitions, and then the total, which we're anticipating to be just over $5.8 million to support out-of-district tuitions. Certainly, another important area of our overall operations is that of technology. By and large, the, this budget and our budget planning has to attend to the areas of technology. It is obviously a key piece of educational service delivery. You can see the overview here that's included within the various accounts, from computer leasing and purchasing, our telephone and infrastructure, cell phones, maintenance and repairs, and the like, just to give you a broad overview of the other fiscal resources that we are seeking your support for to help maintain our services going forward. Additional expenses that this budget plan supports, just to take a moment to highlight these. This budget plan right now before you includes approximately $1.1 million for general education in district transportation services. The yellow buses, said another way. This, this budget plan includes approximately $800,000 for transportation for students receiving special education services that are out of district. Approximately $800,000 to support the athletics department. And that goes towards such things as coaches, referees, equipment, and travel. The budget plan right now has approximately $100,000 to support non-salary expenses for many of our other important departments, including performing arts, visual arts, English as a second language, physical education and health, health education as well. There's approximately $270,000 to support extracurricular and stipend positions. As you know, there are many after-school activities that take place on a regular basis. And those draw upon stipends to help support their operations. And that allocation is outlined here. And certainly, last but not least, as we've talked about previously, the budget plan includes efforts to help support our strategic planning. And specifically, within the area of Objective 3, as we've talked about, the culture of inclusion. And, and that was part of a previous presentation. The, the budget plan going forward includes a capital request overview. As you know, it is typical for us to do our very best to forecast capital expenditures. Capital falls under a certain category, under Mass. General Law, for both life expectancy and the types of things that can fall to that category. We work closely with the town and appreciate their partnership to help support the many other resources that we need. You can see the fiscal year '23 plan on the, the third column from the left. And that includes elementary projectors, a replacement project, Wi-Fi network replacement at the elementary level, network switching as well, part of the network infrastructure, high school projectors, and PAA system upgrade for a total of $400,000 in capital expenditures. We have a couple of additional positions that this plan includes. And again, we've, we've highlighted some of these. But just to take this opportunity to remind members of the committee and the community, three specific positions here that are included in the budget plan. First off, starting with the team chair position. And again, as a reminder, the FTE is the acronym for full-time equivalent. So one whole, whole-time equivalent person here for the team chair. And we are, we are seeking this addition to help support the overall increase in referrals that we have throughout the district around special education. Secondly, the, the second position is special education teacher at the middle school. That's again, the equivalent of 1.0. We are looking to expand the opportunities that we have to support our students at the middle school in that area. You may recall that this was one of the recommendations that came forth from the recently completed WAC report. And so this fulfills those recommendations that came from that report. And finally, school counselor position, a 1.0 equivalent at the Woburn Street School. And this, we, we are confident that will allow for consistency in our staffing across, across our elementary schools. So when you roll that up altogether collectively, this is what the, this is what the picture of the budget for fiscal year '23 looks like. This highlights the personnel changes and the, the differences between fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. There are a number of lines here broken down by educational assistance, teachers, both reductions and additions, and some of the movement that takes place. But the bottom line to draw your attention to is in the bottom right-hand corner. And the fiscal year plan for '23, right now, this collectively serves to support 490, 489, I'm sorry, .45 FTE equivalent staffing positions. Salary changes are highlighted on this slide. And this provides an overview of, and a comparison to fiscal year '22. You can see the, there's many data points there. I won't go through all of them. But these are the things that we, under, obviously, Mr. Rosario's leadership, were careful, carefully to track requirements for steps and lane changes. Those are part of a contractual commitment. New positions and reductions. I highlighted some of that a few moments ago. Salary increases, replacements, and longevity that are all part of the planning here. And you can see the total rolling up for fiscal year '23 budget is just over $36 million. Percentage change of 2.68% specific under salaries. Non-salary changes, there are, of course, a number of elements that are, while, while we're heavily supported by the people that help serve our programs and services, there are also a number of things that we have to support that don't fall to personnel, but other categories. This shows you the changes from fiscal year '22 to '23 in the various categories. And the total non-salary changes, just over $9.5 million in total. The percentage change is 1.8% from, 1.80% from this fiscal year. So in total, the recommended budget, what we have before you that we are seeking your support this evening, you can see the breakdown in two categories. The roll-up for salary and a comparison between this fiscal year, fiscal year '22, to that of fiscal year '23. You can see the overall change there, a 2.6%, 2.68% change for salary. Respectively, you can see the non-salary line there. And that change, as mentioned, is 1.80%. And the total roll-up down below, this fiscal year '23 package before you sits at $45,935,465. You can see respectively, the change at 2.50%. The next steps in the budget process include the presentation of this, of this plan to the Finance Committee on March 1st. And then, of course, town meeting, as soon will be before the residents for their consideration, that's scheduled for April 30th. And with that, thank you for your time and attention. Happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Mrs. Burns? I thank you very much for the very comprehensive budget. And while I, I, it's tough not to give you the accolades. You're so well and deserving on the time that you've spent on this to ensure that we have a balance and that we continue to fall in the black every, at the end of each budget year. So I thank you for that very much. So my question is, and I know I've asked this question before, and forgive me if I can't recall the response to it. With regards to the bus contract with North Reading, where do we stand with that in the negotiations? And what differences are reflected in this FY23 budget? I know that we are, I think, the fifth year was, is coming to a close of sorts. And my apologies, I couldn't, I can't recall what the end result of that was or what the status of that was.
So FY23, so we had a three-year contract and then two option years.
Right.
Town meeting approved the option years back a few, you know, back a few years ago. So FY23 will be, will be exercising the second of the two option years. And then we'll, during FY23, we'll have to go up the bid again for FY24. Indedultally, certain districts, you know, as they go out recently for bus contracts, they've seen increases of 20% to 25%. You know, shortage of drivers and everything. So this is about, I think, 2.6% increase roughly for transportation for the fiscal year '23.
And maybe this is a premature question to ask you at this juncture. Any ideas as to how we're going to navigate the new contract with the increases that they're seeing now? I can only imagine with, if things continue on the path with gas prices, staffing, you know, usage, especially if we look towards other programming that we are trying to grow within our district, with a change of, you know, the discussion behind change of the school times with schools and things of that sort. I just, that is like, in doing initial research back when the committee first started, taking that into example, I know that other districts, not, that are not set up like us, that it wasn't a huge impact. But others, they, it was adding another bus, you know, to a run to balance that, the success of that time. So I'm just a little nervous because with, you know, it'll be soon that, in another couple of months, we'll be, you'll be figuring out how FY24 is going to look like. And I just want to ensure that, you know, especially with the pandemic throwing everything off, I just want to make sure that, you know, we, you know, we are going to be in a similar state that I'm, I'm used to at this juncture in my tenure here. But any ideas as to where, I mean, I mean, grants and, anything can happen, perhaps.
It's hard to really, really say. I know we have the school start time process going on that may have an impact. We have school committee policy on transportation we do look at possibly at some point. And we just have to see what, what it plays out. I know that, I think the shortage is, although there's still a shortage of drivers out there, I think it's easing a little bit. I know the, I think the registry and so forth have made some improvements in their ability to have people get CDL licenses and so forth. So hopefully, that goes back to a certain normalcy, if you will. But we're still kind of in the pandemic, if you will.
Right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
At this time, we invite any participants to speak on the budget. This is not public comment. Public comment comes item number five, which is after our representative. This is about something specific, a line item on the budget that you would like to make a comment about. Are there any comments about the budget?
Any more asking, like, I mean, so obviously, you're, there's a lot of teachers out there that are, you know, making their point that they would like a fair contract. So I saw there.
Are you making a public comment? Are you making a public comment about the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. So you can come, you have to come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you can make a comment about the budget.
Okay.
If you'd like.
I'm asking questions.
So this is not about asking questions. This is not a forum. This is a public comment time. So you can make a, you can make a comment about the budget. And then we will take that into consideration as we are deliberating. But you have to come to the microphone or come sit here.
I think he's going.
Name and address.
Phil Dabai, 524 Shawshing Ave, Wilmington. Is the salary that was on the screen the salary for the contract for the teachers?
So we are currently in negotiations with the teachers.
Was that the salary that you guys were speaking of?
This is FY23 budget. We have not, we have not finished our negotiations with the teachers.
But the salary that was on the screen, what was that salary regarding?
Yeah, the salary includes all known commitments for salary commitments going forward.
Excuse me?
Known salary commitments going forward. So it's our best estimate at this time.
For the teachers?
For all employees of Wilmington Public Schools.
So you guys are fitting that into the budget, the contract?
It's our best estimate at this time for what we may see in FY23.
Good, thank you.
Any other comments about the budget or a line item on the budget? Okay. All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the FY23 budget?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Samaha, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item of business is our Wilmington place. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. I knew that was going to happen. We have to have a motion to close the budget hearing. Is there a motion to close? Thank you, Mr. Fenely. Second, thank you, Mrs. Plowman, all in favor of closing the budget hearing. That is unanimous. Thank you. Did I miss anything else? Got it? All right. I knew I was going to forget that. All right. Our next item of business is our high school representative, Angela Champa. How are you?
Good.
Good, nice to see you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. As you know, we're now in our second semester of the school year. High school students are very excited that they made it through mid-years. So we're very excited to be in the second part of our year, especially seniors who only have a few months left looking onto internships and projects. It's a very exciting time. Students also, because of the shift in the semester, have taken on new electives. So that's really exciting. Some underclassmen have taken on new music electives, such as American music. Seniors have been in independent living and other classes such as Taste of Cultures. And many upperclassmen have now started Health Dynamics, which many other underclassmen took first semester. This week, Health Dynamics started a new unit. We just switched over from volleyball to basketball and yoga. Yoga's one of the favorite units students have here. It's a great way to start and end the day peacefully and learning. Different things from our gym teachers. The change in semesters also marked an end to the service learning classes. It was an elective that only ran during first semester. Our mid-year was to present what you did for a community project. Some successful projects, including creating conservation housing for wood ducks, which live in conservation land in Wilmington, and providing letters to senior citizens for our community. This was a fantastic class. Every student who participated will surely tell you that they gained a positive experience and learned tons of skills, such as networking and making connections within their community. When I last spoke to you in December, I mentioned that our local DECA chapter would compete in the district competition. The first round of competition took place on December 9. I am very proud to report that a total of 46 students from Wilmington High School DECA moved on to the state competition. These individuals placed within the top five of their respective categories to earn their spotted states. The state conference will take place in Boston from March 10th through 12th. We not only have Wilmington High School students competing at Mass. DECA states, but Wilmington DECA member and high school junior Srikar Malajosia will be running for state office of Mass. DECA. This is a position where he will be working with other students in the state who are elected to plan the state development conference and attend district conferences, and basically come up with things to help students in the state who are in DECA. It's a great position, and it's going to be a great experience, especially if we have someone from our club there. You may remember Lexi Williams, I believe, four years ago was on it. So we're very excited, and we wish Srikar and all our competitors the best of luck at this conference. February 9th marks the 100th day of school. In order to celebrate, class officers from all the grades decorated billboards on each of the stairwells in the corners with pictures from their respective grades. Student loves coming in and seeing their pictures up with what their grades have been involved in. It was a really cute thing that boosted school morale. Winter sports are wrapping up. Many students currently have been having their senior night games. Our gymnastics team had their senior night on Monday. And girls hockey will be having their senior night tomorrow. This is the first year that we've had a gymnastics team, and they're doing phenomenal. They're 6-1 this season, which is very, very impressive. Our girls track team is also having an amazing season. They are Middlesex Freedom Division champs, Middlesex League Top 3 overall team, second overall at state relays, and they set the school record for most individual state qualifiers within five years. Tomorrow, they'll compete in the D4 state meet. And I believe they're ranked in the top 20 of all teams in the entire state, which is very impressive. Our wrestling team also competed at the D3 sectionals this past weekend and dominated. Two students, Julian Chella and Luke Vitale, placed first in their respective areas, and it was very impressive. Our co-ed swim team also competed at the CAL league meet, and I believe we had two first-place finishers. Our Mark Trial season competed in their three-trial season during the month of January. The trial this year was surrounding a first-degree murder case in which students had to learn to use new evidence, such as fingerprinting, to argue their case. The team won their first trial on merit, meaning that the judge ruled in their favor guilty or not guilty. And they won their final trial against Long Meadow High, High School, both on merit and points-wise, which was very exciting. It's very difficult to win both ways. It's very difficult to win both ways, so I was very, very proud of them. Model UN has continued hosting in-school conferences throughout the year. Their latest conference last week was on the International Olympic Committee, fitting with the Winter Olympics going on right now. Students debated what city should be the host city for the 2024 Olympic Games, and debated what sports to add to the Summer Olympics. Model UN members will also be attending the B.C. High Model UN Conference on Saturday, March 5th. There will be conferences dealing with humanitarian crises and environmental crises, such as representing Boston City Council to deal with issues of flooding. The Wired Wildcats, our robotics team at the high school, came in second place in the regional FTC First Tech Challenge competition at North Andover High School this past Saturday. They were one of 20 teams that competed to qualify for the state competition. The middle school team also competed and placed 11th overall, and they won the Energy Efficiency Award. The high school and middle school robotics teams would love to do a quick five-minute presentation for the school committee on a future date. The World Cultures Club had a meeting yesterday to learn and explore about Chinese New Year. And the SAD Club decorated the poles in the cafeteria with different hearts for the PS I Love You Day. They encouraged people to wear purple as part of the movement. The PS I Love You Day was created in 2010 by the De Palma family, who lost their father, Joseph, to suicide. The movement was created to stand up against bullying and help end depression and prevent suicide. Spring sports registration opened up two weeks ago and is continuing now. Students are very excited for their spring sports season, especially seniors. Although there is excitement, some teams going into their season are going in with concerns and no answers. Girls Lacrosse does not have a varsity or JV coach. They have not been given any information about what's gonna happen to their season, if there's a prospective coach or anything. There are many seniors on this team, and they're very concerned what's gonna happen with their final season. They're very passionate. Many of them have been playing this sport for years, and they really don't wanna see their final season fall apart. Looking to the spring, juniors and seniors have both formed prom committees to start preparing. Junior prom is scheduled for April 8th at Tucksbury Country Club. Their theme will be Enchanted Garden. And senior prom is on May 13th, Friday the 13th, at Castleton in New Hampshire, and the senior prom theme is Cloud Nine. Junior class officers held a fundraiser the past week where they sold Teddy grams at lunch, and students were able to buy a teddy bear that was then to send to their friends, and the juniors passed them out to people at the end of the day on Valentine's Day. The juniors also wanted me to let everyone know that if after-school committee, if anyone's hungry, they have a fundraiser going on at Chipotle until 9:00 P.M. On January 27th, AP Gov students took a field trip to the Edward Kennedy Center, where students learned about the Voting Rights Act and participated in a mock senate where they debated the bill at hand by taking on the role of U.S. senators. They actually got to sit in a chamber that is recreated just like the chamber in D.C., so I was very excited for students to put in what they've been learning in class into real-world action. Senior English classes are currently working on Shakespeare. AP Lit just wrapped up reading Hamlet, and Honors English 12 is currently reading Othello. Students are excited to continue learning and look forward to the spring. Seniors are preparing their proposals for senior exploration. Students can either do a project or an internship during the month of May. Their proposals will be due on March 4th, and along with writing proposals, seniors are hearing back from colleges and looking for scholarships. One thing almost all senior students can agree on right now is that we need more resources to look at scholarships. Right now, really, the only resource we have is seeing our school counselors, and they refer us to Naviance, but most of the scholarships on Naviance are either outdated or haven't posted links for what's coming up in 2022, and a lot of local scholarships haven't announced if they're coming back. So with, when we have 200 kids looking for scholarships and there's only five available, it's a very stressful time, and we are looking for more resources. Thank you for having me. Are there any questions?
Yes, actually. How, this is, every time it's comprehensive, but it gets more and more comprehensive each time, and I wonder, I'm trying to like picture you around the building, I'm like, actually like interviewing everyone, like, how do you compile all of it?
I do the morning announcements, so a lot of the information comes to me where people text me to put things on the announcements, so that's really helpful. I try and keep up with like what teachers are running things. Teachers usually have things on their door, and there's flyers everywhere in the building, which is helpful. Another great thing that kinda came from the pandemic is a lot of clubs have Instagrams and social medias, so I'll follow all those, and it's really great to see what kids will post, because it's not just posting what their meetings were about or when their meetings are, but they'll post different events they're going to and who's involved, so it's easy to find contacts.
Well, we so deeply appreciate the time that you put into this and that you provide it to us in writing prior to the meeting. It's just, it's really excellent, so, and it makes us, I think we all feel as though we kind of get to experience some of it alongside you, and I appreciate you bringing those concerns to us, too. I think that's a new addition.
Yeah.
And we do appreciate that, so, thank you very much. Mrs. Burns?
So I, just intrigued by it all, and, and especially, all these students are just so impressive, especially in light of this, what we're dealing with still in, as a community and as a society. I did have just a curious question with regards to the Mark Trial. Do you know, where does that take place? Where does, where does that?
Yeah, so it's put out, the actual trial, it's about what the rules included, it's about a 100-page packet. The first 50 pages are all rules, and the second 50 pages is all the actual case. It's put out by the Mass Bar Association each year. A lot of classes use it, like for our criminal justice class at the high school, our second quarter has surrounded that case, and that's how you learn how different case law works and how to negotiate it. So this year, it was all done on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
And it's run by the Mass Bar, so it's set up like a tournament-style.
Yep, right, so you have a judge who devotes their time to listen to the arguments.
Right, and the judge is always, it's a practicing lawyer, someone who is a member of the Mass Bar, so it's always really helpful for students after. The judges are great about giving feedback, answering any questions, so it's great to hear real-world experience from someone. And the judges also take classes on the actual case, so they really know the ins and outs, what the evidence is, and can be there to answer specific questions for students. Normally, my freshman and sophomore year, we were able to actually go to like courthouses. We went down in Lowell to Lawrence, they have them at any respective courthouses around, but it's been interesting now that it's on Zoom, because we used to compete against the same three schools every year, but now we're against schools we've never even heard of before, so it's really fun.
Wow, fabulous.
Thank you.
I would like, you know, with, as we move and progress and grow and open up, I would love to revisit at our meetings, the showcasing, showcases of our, the clubs and things that are going on within our, our schools like we used to. I think it was just wonderful to see, you know, the acapella group and the robotics club, which they had their little things spinning around, and I, I think it's what I need at the end of the day, so, and I think it's fabulous. Some of the things that they're, high-level thought processes and, you know, the concrete actions of what their work and creativity have come to fruition and the compet, I love hearing about that. I would love to see if we perhaps can start, whether it be every other meeting, whatever is reasonable, I would love to bring that back and showcase, you know, everything that you've spoken about, actually, you know, within our, within our schools. I think it's a great idea. And I thank you.
Robotics team has signed up to be first, so we'll get back, we'll get back to them right away. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. All right. Our next item of business is public comment. Mr. Ragstow?
So before we begin public comment, I want to provide a reminder that the school committee does have a policy that public comments should be related to an item on the agenda, and we have been fairly liberal with that, because we do want people to be able to have their say, but we do ask people to confine their comments to items on the agenda, and we may be more strict about this in the future. We also ask that people limit their comments to three minutes. So we have three people signed up for public comment. First, Jeffrey Cohen.
Good evening. Jeffrey Cohen, 18 Cobalt Street in Wilmington. Recently, a Wilmington teacher posted five separate photos outside of a classroom. These five photos were of fatalities involving police officers and victims who were black. The pictures with their social justice stories were quickly taken down, but not before the photos were published on a community website. This tactic of denigrating police officers is a common narrative with promoters of racial tensions, despite it being destructive to the social fabric of this republic. The facts are clear. These incidents are quite rare and usually involve the suspect resisting arrest. The sharp rise in law enforcement fatalities in the last year, a 59% increase, is likely tied to this disrespect. Where is the support for our brave officers who put their lives on the line every day? These pictures should never have been posted. I believe that the significant increase in violent crime has been fueled by clueless individuals and groups who are promoting a political agenda of denigrating police officers instead of looking at the facts. These individuals and groups have been promoting a defund the police movement. Does anyone really think that defunding the police is a viable solution? If violent crime is to be properly addressed, we need more police officers, not fewer. To put this in perspective, you are seven times more likely to be murdered and 15%, 15 times more likely to die in a traffic accident than have a police officer use excessive force on you. Black Americans make up 15% of the population, yet they account for 50% of murders and 38% of overall violent crime. Where are all the initiatives to combat the root causes of crime? I'm not stating that there are no isolated instances of racism in the U.S., including law enforcement. What I am saying is that a small minority promoting this twisted agenda, is promoting this twisted agenda for political gain. We need to get to the root causes of the crime problem and stop disparaging police who are being targeted for political reasons. On a different note, Wilmington schools have been promoting so-called diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, for which there is no measurable goals to determine when these initiatives have been met. Should William, Wilmington have the same diversity goals as Boston? Here's one example of why DEI has no, no place in education. If you know someone who has a serious medical condition, for example, they need a heart transplant. Do you think diversity should come in, should determine who the surgeon will be? Or do you think that the best qualified person should be chosen without regard to race? The answer is clear. DEI does not promote excellence, it's a political agenda. So-called social and emotional learning is another political agenda. Perhaps the reason why Wilmington has chosen to promote this nonsense is the fear of losing grant money from the U.S. Department of Education. If our schools fail to promote SEL, they could lose hundreds of thousands in federal grants which are directly tied to it. It's very sad to think that our schools have chosen grant money over the well-being of our students. Perhaps if they weren't subjected to mandates, remote learning, and racial division, there wouldn't be massive increase in mental health disorders. When will this committee support a return to educating students in the core subjects of math, science, English, and history without using a political agenda? So-called DEI and SEL have no place in education. Thank you.
Next person who's signed up is Phil Dubai. Please forward, state your name and make your comment.
Phil Dubai, 524 Shawshank Ave, here in Wilmington. I'm happy with the decision of DESI who recommended to remove the mask mandate on the 29th. I think it's long overdue. I'd like to piggyback on their recommendations, stating that you guys have set a standard following DESI guidelines and have no stance to go against it now. If some parents are against that recommendation, their kids still have the option to wear masks. I'd also like to point out that people are getting fed up. This isn't just a couple upset parents in town. All across the world, there's outcry on mandate overreach. One of the biggest examples right now is the truck convoy in Canada, or all the high school walkouts across the United States. Let parents make the appropriate choices for their kids and drop the mask mandates. I also support these teachers outside, and they deserve a contract with everything they've been up against in the last two years. I was gonna stop there until you told me that I had to put a mask on when last meeting, I sat there with no mask and one person said anything to me, and on the way out, I thanked that officer for following the laws. This mask, I'm not under any contract in this building, but I helped fund it, because I live here. There's no law. You can't kick me out of, you threaten me with a trespass? You put her qualified immunity at risk? You can't trespass me from a public building unless I break a law. Shame on you. And then I put a mask over my chin, and you let me sit there? That's a power trip, and it's getting off on a bad foot with, with the DESI mandates coming up. You guys gonna drop them, or is it biased? Do you just want a power trip, have our kids sit here and wear masks so you feel good? Thanks. I'll leave now.
Third person who's signed up is Suzanne Crawl.
Dear school committee members, Superintendent Brand, administrators, parents, and teachers, I would like to thank you all for your commitment to the town of Wilmington and for listening to my thoughts this evening. I am a lifetime Wilmington resident. I am a mother of two elementary-age children who have been attending Wilmington Public Schools since kindergarten. I graduated from high school, from Wilmington High School, not this beautiful one, the old one, and have been living, living in Wilmington since I graduated from college. I've been working as a speech-language pathologist for the Wilmington Public Schools since 2005. I truly love what I do every day. I, alongside my colleagues, teach children how to communicate, whether it be with words, pictures, sign language, body language, or devices. We teach our students to use their words, to express their feelings, and to let their teachers know what they want and need. We teach them self-advocacy skills, such as how to ask for help, how to ask a teacher to repeat something they don't understand, and how to formulate questions. We teach our students to build their confidence. We teach our students how to be respectful, and I certainly enjoy the many conversations that I have with my students. I believe it is important for you to hear about the positives that are happening within our schools every day. So often, as a society, we hear about negativity, particularly in your roles, and not enough positivity. As an educator, I see day after day my colleagues working hard to educate our students. We care about our students. We often call our students our kids. I've had many conversations with colleagues where we had to clarify if we were talking about our kids in our classrooms or our own kids at home. I would like to take this opportunity to thank my own children's current and past teachers for all they do. Not only do my children have great classroom teachers, but they look forward to participating in their specialist classes and, of course, bands every week. Despite the uncertainty of the world that we are living in, my children are excited to go to school every day and come off the bus with a smile. Their teachers are giving them the care, structure, knowledge, and predictability that they need in a very unpredictable world. Circling back to my own job now, it is time that I practice what I preach to my students. It's an important to be, it's important to be an advocate for yourself, to use your voice, to communicate with others, and to not give up. Our administrators are thanking us for all that we do in our schools every day. I can't think of a better way to thank us than by offering a fair agreement that is competitive with neighboring towns soon, to show educators that we are respected and appreciated for all that we do for our students. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address.
How we doing? My name's Joe Antelli from 5 Tacoma Drive in Wilmington. I would like to bring up a few issues of concern. First, what is going to happen with the lunch at the North intermediate school at this time? Has two classes each lunch, eating on the floor of the gym. This is the only school that I know of treating our kids this way. We have reached out to the principal, but still waiting for our reply. Second, the last report of COVID cases in Wilmington is 15 total cases. There is no area in Wilmington that required masks today, except in our public schools, where our kids are least affected population of COVID. This is, my opinion, is only, this is, in my opinion, only to train them to obey authority of DESI and the school board. Example of this is in the fourth-grade music class, where any wind instrument needs to wear a mask with a slit in it. What is the science or common sense that says that the mask is doing anything meaningful at all? We all know the answer, nothing. Even the CDC agrees. That mask protects as well as the mask that the person driving in a car by themselves is protecting that person against themselves. Lastly, the social-emotional toll on our kids is going to be seen for many years to come. Thank you, and support our teachers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Rob Zulo, 28 Marjory Road, Wilmington. I had initially come here to ask you, as the father of three, two of which are in the Wilmington schools, to end the mask mandate, but with your numbers that you just put up there on the, the budget, I have a rhetorical question, and I guess you guys aren't gonna be able to answer today, but as many of you know, a very large 40B was proposed for the town. We've got Hayden Properties that's being developed into 40 to 60 units. We've got another 40 units over at Walpole Woodworkers. We've got a possible Princeton Properties with 103 units, and then this 136 units up on West Street. How is the school department, is the school department prepared for the onslaught of students that these are, these projects can throw into the system? And how are they prepared for a much larger project coming down the road up in North, North Wilmington? I don't know, can you guys answer that, or is it just a rhetorical that I'm just gonna walk away?
We haven't even discussed that as a board, so we would certainly be in no position to answer that at this point.
Okay. And enrollment at the high school? What is the enrollment today? Was that the 630 that was up on the board? I thought I saw 638.
And so, again, I'm so sorry, and I know this is so complicated for people. This is a meeting of the school committee.
Yep.
This is public comment. You make your comments. You don't get into a Q&amp;A, that would be a form. However, as I've said in multiple, multiple meetings, people joined us on Zoom yesterday. People have been calling me all week, people have been emailing us, and we are very, very happy to meet, to talk, to discuss. Two of us can meet with anybody and have a conversation and answer as many questions as we can possibly answer. We can't do that here, and I certainly can't allow it now, because I haven't allowed it at all this whole time, so it would be very difficult.
You guys put the, you guys put the number there, I was just questioning what the number was.
I don't, so, sorry, Paul, 630?
I didn't put it there.
I believe it was 653.
All right, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
David.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Kristy Gaitan, 5 Elizabeth Drive in Wilmington. I obviously wasn't prepared to speak, so I didn't write anything down. I'd just like to say, I was looking at the numbers as well, and they definitely don't align with inflation, which I think we can all agree, like 2% isn't really inflation. So I definitely think we should probably maybe reevaluate those numbers, knowing that inflation's going to continue to rise as well over this coming year. And then, as a mother, I'd like to speak on behalf of the masks, because I also have two children in the school system, and when I'm hearing somebody talk about the, you know, speech and communication, my son, I'm trying not to get teared up, because even hearing her talk, I was getting teared up. because even hearing her talk, I was getting teared up. I have a first grader who's been extremely impacted by the masks and being forced into school because he is young, he's an August baby, and he was, I wanted to hold him back before, I wanted him to go to preschool. And unfortunately, I didn't have that choice. I was told that he had to go into kindergarten or otherwise he would have to then skip kindergarten and go into first grade. So I was one of those parents, you know, unfortunately that had to make the decision and I put him into kindergarten. And he did not do well on Zoom. My son is now falling behind. He is, we're talking about possibly ADD diagnosis, speech has to be evaluated, a whole, and now I'm going to make a phone call to you guys about a full evaluation. And I knew, I said this was going to happen because he's young. And he, the teacher has commented to me that does he have a hearing problem? Because he's saying he can't hear with her with the mask on. He doesn't have a hearing problem. It's the mask. He, he has, if he has ADD, which is a diagnosis we are seeking if he does have, they, we've been told that children with ADD should not, can have trouble with masks because they need to focus on a teacher's mouth to help them to stay focused in the classroom. So just minor things like that have accumulated to a huge problem. And I am extremely emotional about this because I feel like the last two years, you guys have failed my child, failed him. And me as a mother, I was there and I was trying to advocate and I trusted you. I trusted you guys. I trusted you. I put him into the school because I had no choice. And should I have gone private? Is that where I am? I should, like, I almost went private. And now I regret that I didn't go private. And I shouldn't, I shouldn't be sitting here having this discussion. And you should pay our teachers. Like, we pay enough in taxes. Pay our teachers. Like, this is crazy. And that, I, again, I was not prepared to talk, so I'm sorry. I'm not well spoken and I wasn't prepared for this. But I really, really, really hope I understand the other side of it. And if you choose to wear a mask, I'm all, you can, that's your right. I'm all for your right to choose. But don't take away from the parents that no longer want our children to wear masks anymore. That's all I have to say. And I really hope you hear that. All right.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Douglas Anastasia. I live at 23 Douglas Ave. I know my friends give me a lot of crap about that. And I'm sorry to follow up after that with a joke. I just came here tonight to ask you to follow Dr. Brand's recommendation about the mask removal. I just looked at the WHO website for the first time, and I guess two years, and I was kind of surprised to learn that they didn't actually recommend masks for younger children. But it is what it is. We're almost at that stage now. But I guess what I wanted to just mention after hearing a few people speak is that my son is in, excuse me, seventh grade. And him and all of his friends are talking about wanting to go to the Shaw Sheen. And I didn't really give it much thought, tech that is. And I've been reaching out to other parents just to see why, why would they be choosing that school? And it seems like there's a pretty big consensus about certain things, the schools not having air conditioning, eating off the floor, and things like that. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm a little concerned about those things. But I have nothing bad to say, quite the opposite about the education they've gotten so far at the Woburn Street and the north and so far at the middle school. They're thriving and they, they're doing great. So thank you very much for your time.
This will have to be our last comment because we do have to move forward in the agenda.
I'll make this quick. My name is Andrew Shelton from Five Foley Farm Road. And first of all, I'd like to thank all of you guys because I know you have a tremendous amount of responsibility and accountability that comes from us as the parents. I wasn't going to speak and I'm probably going to embarrass my wife by doing so. But I wanted to point out and piggyback off a lot of people's concerns about the mask mandate. As a father with a young boy, I have noticed that there has been a lot of side effects to him having the mask on and dealing with kids and, and how he communicates with them and how he also socializes with them. And it's getting to a point that I think without anything getting political or anything along that lines, eventually the masks are going to have to go. I mean, we are either going to have to live with COVID or deal with COVID, and we can't wear these forever. So the question is, when will it go? And I don't want to wait until my son is to a point where this could be affecting his development in any way, shape, or form. Similar to her, my son also deals with speech problems. So he has to go to a teacher to help him with his speech. And they've been doing a fantastic job. But I have similar concerns when it comes down to the masks too. So just overall, I want you to take in consideration that is that, at the end of the day, as parents, we take a lot of onus and control in our children, making sure that they are taken care of. It is our jobs. And I respect everything that you guys have been doing here. But I want you to take in consideration, it's also our choice on whether or not our children should wear the mask or not. We should assume whatever consequences may or may not come from it. And if someone wants to wear a mask or their children wear a mask, they should be able to do so. But on the same time, if our children, if we decide not to have them wear a mask, then I think that should be our choice. So I thank you very much for your time. I know we're kind of running late with everyone talking, but I do appreciate a lot of me to voice my opinion.
So I think we're ready for our next item.
Yeah, I'm just trying to decide if I want to, do we have Dr. Curdo then on the line?
I just something I want to address regarding, if they do, Kristi Etienne with Five Elizabeth Drive, if they, if we take the masks off, I also want to address, like, are we going to then start the kids can't be around each other, they have to socially distance? Like, what are we going to do here? Because I want to make sure we're not going to do that. Because if we take the mask off, we're talking like back to normal, not the kids can't, because I overheard, because I volunteer at the schools, like I'm at, I know a lot of the teachers and stuff. So I am at lunch and stuff, and I'm happy to do so. And I did hear, you know, that after the break, somebody saying, oh, there's going to be only three kids allotted in the lunch inside the, where they go to get their lunches, which tells me right now there's, they're allowed five. So that is telling me that that's something, if you're thinking after the break and there's no longer masks, is that something they're implementing to try to socially distance the kids? And again, I just want us to move forward. I don't want it to be that now, oh, we have no mask, oh, you can't breathe on me, don't come near me. Like, we need to really teach these kids to start living a normal life. And that's what I just wanted to address, that we pay attention to that stuff too as well. Thank you.
Well, I'm asking if we have Dr. Curdo on the line.
I can get him.
Hello?
Hi, Dr. Curdo.
Yeah?
Can you hear us? This is, this is Melissa from the school committee in Wilmington.
Hey Melissa, how are you?
All right. I'm going to turn you over to Jen Bryson.
Okay.
All right. Hi, Mark. We're actually just, we're taking things out of order if it's okay with the committee. Are we okay with moving new business now? And we'll talk about the mask policy at this moment. Is that okay? Okay. Hi, Dr. Curdo, thanks for being here. And Rebecca Brown, will you come down and join us? Thank you. Rebecca Brown, our director of nursing, and we have Dr. Curdo, our school physician on the line. And we are going to address school committee policy, BBCFA face coverings. And I will, we have this revised policy. So the subcommittee met yesterday via Zoom. Subcommittee is made up of David, Jessie, and myself. We talked through, we revised this policy. We received a revised version of that. I know there will be questions, which is why we've asked Becky and Mark to be with us this evening to ask some questions. And I think I will leave it there and see how people want to get, how the committee would like to get started, unless you have anything else you want to add about the changes perhaps.
I think maybe I'll just describe what we have in the policy, revised policy. So the revised policy would state, and I can, I can essentially read the, read the heart of it because it's not very long. In all WPS buildings and for all WPS programs, wearing a mask or other face covering is optional with the following exceptions. Students and staff returning from a five day quarantine after a positive COVID test must wear a mask other than when eating, drinking, or outside through day tentative exposure. Students who are symptomatic and/or test positive for COVID in school must wear a medical grade mask provided by the nurse while waiting in the health office. And then we have a third bullet that I'm going to propose a revision for. At the moment, it reads by federal public health order, all students and staff are required to wear a mask on school buses. And I have emailed all of you a proposed revision to that, which I will address in a moment. But that's the, the nature of the heart of the policy.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. All right. Do we want to, do we want to dive in? Any questions, concerns, thoughts? Mr. Smaha?
I have a question about, it says in the proposing policy, it says that students who are symptomatic and/or test positive, symptomatic, is the, how is that determined? Like, is that a cough? You know, is that, like, how, how would that be addressed?
I think it's differentiating a student who comes in with an injury, who's getting ICE right now in most of the, or, you know, someone who's coming in for a headache. Right now in all of the schools, we have areas where we triage the students before we actually bring them into the rooms. We have medical waiting rooms. The nurses, since the beginning of this, have been making assessments based on the guidelines. And that's what we propose that we'll continue to do. So students who come in and they have multiple COVID symptoms, we will ask them and we will provide them, we will ask them to put on a mask. And we'll do symptomatic testing with parent permission.
Okay, I guess just, and what would, what's, and the outcome of that is, do you give them a test there?
So a student who would come in symptomatic, we have a template that we have been using based on CDC guidelines as far as symptoms. So we would call the parent, because we're now doing symptomatic testing, we would call the parent if they haven't already given us consent somehow. But if we haven't, we, and we, as a courtesy, we do call parents and say, your child's here in the health office. They're presenting with X, Y, and Z. Your options are, you can come pick up your child and have them tested at home, or we are willing to test if you give us permission. If they test negative and we think they're well enough, and they think they're well enough, and the parent agrees, they can remain in school. If they're positive, obviously they need to go home. And then, you know, sometimes even students who test negative should not be in school. They're sick and they should go home and, you know, be symptom free for 24 hours.
Okay. So, so just to clarify, so that student, in the case where the student goes back to class, would they be required to wear the mask back in the, in the class?
It depends on the symptom. If they have a cough, yes, we would ask them to wear a mask. You know, if they have a combination of a headache and maybe abdominal distress, that's two COVID symptoms, but they're not COVID symptoms that potentially, because we all know that the antigen studies, you have to be, you have to reach a viral critical load in order for them to be positive. So there are, there are false negatives. So in the case of a cough where a child could potentially be contagious but not have reached the critical viral load yet, I think in that situation, we would put a mask on. If they have a headache and abdominal discomfort, probably not because it's, it's, the virus is airborne.
Can I back up just one second? I'm just going to back up a second. Okay. So the subcommittee met yesterday. As we have done this entire time through this whole pandemic, we've been following DESI guidance. We have not strayed from that. We have followed DESI guidance and we have followed Dr. Curdo, Dorian Crowe, and obviously now Becky Brown's guidance, right? So let me just read the very first part. Here's what we are, here's what we are suggesting to the committee. In all WPS buildings and for all WPS programs, wearing a mask or other face covering is optional with the following exceptions. So now we're into those bullet points. So just to be clear to people who are watching, we're addressing those particular bullet points. But we're addressing this adoption as a whole with the committee this evening to see how we move forward. Dr. Curdo, as it stands, can you hear me, Mark?
Yep. A little acly, but I can hear you.
I'm just going to jump right in. And as it stands, wearing a mask or other face covering is optional. We have spoken, obviously, but just for everyone else, you are supportive of this updated policy, correct or no?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Can you just tell us a little bit about why?
Yep. So the, the biggest reason why is, if you remember like way back in August when we were talking about instituting the mask policy in the first place, we always talked about like, hey, what are the metrics that we can use, you know, in order to kind of rescind the mask policy? And then there was nothing really specific that was to kind of put a finger on at the time. But if you look at sort of the numbers, the way Omicron is going right now, the first week of January, Massachusetts was having, you know, upwards of 30,000 cases per day of Omicron. And we, in my office, we were getting tons of phone calls for people that were, you know, families that were going down with Omicron. And it was just incredibly contagious. The latest numbers from Massachusetts, you know, over the past couple of days is, it's ranging about 1,300 to 1,400 per day. So that's a huge drop in Omicron over the, you know, over the past month or so. So the metrics are looking fantastic that way. I can tell you in my office, I haven't even seen or heard of a case of COVID for a couple of weeks, you know, where we were getting probably 10 to 20 calls a day and, and seeing kids every single day with COVID. So even in my office, we're seeing a, a huge downtrend in it. And if we look at other countries, so both South Africa and England both had their Omicron peak before, before we did in the United States. And what they noticed was after the Omicron peak, because Omicron was so insanely contagious, it basically drove the numbers right to herd immunity. So at that point, they really started peeling back all of their, their mask mandates, their vaccine mandates, everything after the Omicron surge. Because once we hit that herd immunity, we know that, you know, even if there are a case here, a case there, it's not going to spread like wildfire, like, you know, like we, like we saw, you know, late December, early January, where it was, you know, absolutely crazy.
Thank you, Dr. Curdo. All right. So I'm just trying to center us and now open it up to, to questions for either Dr. Curdo, Becky Brown, or just to deliberate among ourselves. Are there questions? Melissa Plowman, did you have your hand up?
I, I just have a, I have a concern with the second bullet that says students who are symptomatic. I think that there's so much room for interpretation there for individual nurses, individual schools. I, I don't want to see us putting masks on kids who have asthma and are coughing and who might have a common cold. I, I just, I, I'm just not comfortable with that. I, I agree that a student who tests positive for COVID in school and is waiting for their caregiver to pick them up, then of, of course, that seems logical and reasonable to me. I can, yeah, so I, I don't know. I, I need to chew on that a little bit. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the language around that.
Dr. Curdo, do you have any thoughts on that in particular? If we were to remove, for example, as two members may be suggesting, if we were to remove students who are symptomatic and just make it as, read as students who test positive for COVID in school must wear a medical grade mask while waiting in the health office? Or do you think that it makes sense to keep students who are symptomatic and/or test positive for COVID in school must wear a medical grade mask?
I think as the numbers continue to go down, it makes sense to kind of keep it as, you know, if they're displaying symptoms of COVID, you know, that they should, you know, mask up and not expose the, the kids around them. As we see the numbers continue to drop and drop and drop, I think that we could even, maybe even relook at that later. The hard part is right now, if you have, you know, if a kid comes in my office with a head cold, a month and a half ago, you know, there was a 99% chance that that kid had COVID. You know, right now, if that kid comes in the office and they have symptoms of a cold, you know, there's about a, you know, 90% chance that they don't have COVID. But I'm still going to test them for COVID. I'm still going to counsel them as if it could be COVID. So it's still on my radar, but, you know, we're seeing it so. Um, so it's still on my radar, but, you know, we're seeing it so much less at this point, uh, which I think is fantastic. But unfortunately, right now, we still are in kind of that mindset of, of, you know, pretty much everything is COVID until proven otherwise. But I think until we start to see, you know, those numbers continue to, to, uh, waste away to near, you know, to record low levels, then I see, I think we still have to, you know, kind of assume that if a kid has cold symptoms, that it, it could be COVID.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Burns?
So, Dr. Curdo, are we in, um, cold and flu season or what was, used to be known as the cold and flu season?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. There's no doubt this is still cold and flu season.
Okay. And can you remind me, when typically, um, do we see that tend to wane approximately?
Uh, cold and flu season really doesn't wane until, um, kind of late March. Yeah, I would say kind of the end of March is the, when we see, uh, cold and flu season start to disappear.
And Mark, are you seeing any flu?
Our what?
Are you seeing any flu?
Right now, we're actually not seeing any flu. We saw a whole bunch of flu at the very beginning of December. Um, so like the first two weeks of December, we saw a ton of influenza A. And then as Omicron really picked up, we saw influenza disappear, which was crazy. Um, so now with Omicron's going away, I'm curious if we're going to see, usually we see kind of a late peak of more influenza B.
So I, I do have an additional question, Dr. Curdo, if you can answer to the best of your ability. So.
Yeah.
We, seven of us have the distinction of having to, um, make this decision, not on behalf of our own kids, but on behalf of over 3,000, uh, children and staff members. And my, my concern that I, 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 and I say this generally, not, um, as best as you, you know, from your, uh, walk. For those who suffer from those pulmonary diseases, whether it be cystic fibrosis, asthma, diabetes, obesity, those high morbid um, factors that have been, um, touted as more at risk. In, in this transition, because I do agree, I think we do need to come up with an exit plan that I think we've been waiting for. Um, my concern is I'm not sure what, when that would be. I'm not talking the end of the year certainly, but I want to do this as safely as possible, but my biggest concern is, what would you recommend? Because we're talking about optional mask wearing. Well, I, in some cases, and from what I'm hearing and understanding, some optional is not optional for all. And when you're looking at public schools and access to education and keeping teachers in the classroom and keep them, and, um, and state law. Uh, I, I just, what is your thoughts, um, around this?
In terms of the high-risk kids?
Yeah. And it, high, high risk in general, population in general, because it, it impacts, we, we keep talking about the children, but the children can't learn if they don't have staff in the classroom and not to, not knowing anybody's in medical, you know, background, I just, I'm, I just, I, I would, I just want to make sure that I want to, we want to do this mindfully, I think is what I'm trying to say. And I just didn't know what your suggestion were. Do they not have an option? You know, I mean, I'm just trying to factor that piece in. There's always somebody without an option.
For the high-risk kids is that they're going to be high-risk, say they have CF. You know, that's a, that's a good one to pick is that, you know, they're going to be at risk if they catch influenza just as much as if they catch, uh, COVID.
Okay.
Um, so if I had a kid with CF who was in the, the school system, after watching like how well the masks, uh, performed, you know, I would keep my kid with CF, you know, with the mask on during cold and flu season. And I would even, you know, think about it like next year and be like, wow, this winter was so good. I've had some parents in my practice be like, my kids have never been healthier than when, um, not this winter, but the previous winter with, uh, you know, with COVID, with the masking and with the, um,
Hands.
Social distancing.
Yeah.
And so I, I would say probably 10% of my patients are going to continue to wear masks, you know, just because they've never been healthier and they've never, you know, uh, uh, done as well before, so.
Could I, um, ask some questions? Because it goes in conjunction with the policy that we set for. So, and I scoured because I, I, I do, I do stand on the laurels that we do need to look for an exit.
I have to be honest with you that I, I can't consider DESI in my position, only, and no offense, please, but only in the fact that the way that I've otherwise with curriculum and that type of guidance, that's not the contention with me. It's the contention as to how they handled the pandemic and where they put our districts in. That's me, it's my personal opinion. But I do, do very much rely on our, our nurse manager, uh, Director of Nursing, Dr. Curdo, Board of Health to guide us in this transition. A couple of things. My biggest concern that I just wanted to get on the record is that, you know, Mass General Law, Part One, Section, excuse me, Title Two, uh, 12, Chapter 69, Section 1P, speaks directly of safe and supportive schools. Talks about, um, the inclusion of, of students with disabilities and ensuring our environments are healthy and safe mentally, behaviorally, socially, so that kids can learn and grow. This is not the pandemic and this societal impact. It's not political, it's a societal impact that impacts the world. These laws were not written with that in mind, and I don't think they've been altered in that specific case. I want to make sure, my only concern is trying to ensure that we do have equity and inclusivity within our schools with the access. I don't want, I don't want to see any students, because it's not a small handful we're talking about. We, there are kids and staff members and adminis, and I'm not talking about teachers, just teachers, but administrators that, yeah, they're mine, they're under our purview as well when it comes to their health and wellbeing of the environment in which they do their job. Um, that has to be considered. Um, I've got a couple of things that, of solutions, because I can't come to the table, say, well, this and not have some, um, things that I would like to bring forth. I, I would, I would like to see language, um, with regards to in, in this, in this policy pertaining to depending on certain criteria, I'm hoping we won't ever have to use it, but, um, but numbers, if our community starts rising and gets into a red zone where we're maybe backtracking, I just.
Yeah. Well, it's funny because we actually talked about that a little bit yesterday in our subcommittee meeting.
Great.
And we decided that if something, I think we talked through this with you, Becky.
Hmm.
If there were to suddenly be this major change, we would just simply come back and revise the policy as it exists. If there didn't seem to be a need, we haven't inserted metrics yet, so there was sort of this, why would we suddenly do that now? We could just come back to the table and revise the policy.
We have that option, but I think, um, because this, this really is unprecedented. And this has just been an unprecedented path. So I just think for clarity and transparency with regards to this specific, that when, I'm not saying put in specific metrics, that can be determined on the, the basis of what Dr. Curdo, what the Board of Health, what our schools, you know, with, you know, Becky. That could, I don't think we have to put in specific measures, but if there is a concern of public wellbeing and health, um, I, I, I would like to see some language sting that based, based on certain criteria that we may have to revisit and we may have to exercise re-implementation, you know, at, you know what I mean? I, that kind of lang, I was just looking for specific criteria if we reach a 7.5%. I don't know if that's policy, it's not supposed to be exact like that, but, um, and I don't think in this, in this is a situation, a topic that we can actually put like hard black and white numbers to. I would like to hear, um, again, the others' input with regards to this policy and if there's anything else that we need to cover. I want to make sure it doesn't, it doesn't impact the state laws that we still are under with regards to, um, safe, healthy environments, um, under safe and supportive schools. But, um, I also think that we do need an exit strategy and I, as we develop this policy, I would like to instead consider, uh, the beginning of April, uh, whatever that Monday may be, as, as the date for, for this policy to, um, begin. Not February 28th. I think it's just too early in the middle, too, I think it's too soon in the midst of the cold and flu season and it's a virus season. And it impacts, it just impacts our students' ability to access their education in the classroom. I have no problem rolling it back, but I think where teachers could open up their windows and have another layer of protection.
Let me, let me stop. Dr. Curdo, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So we, we have spoken and you advised that the February 28th seemed to be just fine. Um, do you have any thoughts on implementation date? So we're not actually voting on an implementation date within this policy, but do you have thoughts on an implementation date, um, of the new policy, which would make masks optional? Um, obviously the state has come out with February 28th. And I believe you, Becky, and Shelley supported that, although we did have some conversations yesterday in our subcommittee meeting about making some recommendations. For example, if children were traveling with their families, we might recommend that if they were coming back, they might test and mask. There were some things that came up like that, but Dr. Curdo, can you just give us sort of, what are your thoughts on a date of implementation? Do you think that February 28th is, is the safe thing for us to do, or would you have a different recommendation?
Um, actually, I think February 28th is actually a pretty good, um, point if you, uh, just look at the trend of COVID right now. Where, um, last week, the numbers were, you know, anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000 per day. This week, they're ranging about 1,000 per day. You know, it's kind of going down by about 50% per week. So if you follow those numbers, then odds are by next week, we're really going to be seeing under, you know, maybe 500 or something per day, which is essentially what the numbers we were seeing kind of last summer when, you know, everything was really being peeled back and everyone was getting rid of masks and everything. So I think the way the metrics are going right now, I think, you know, the end of February, um, or, you know, beginning of March would actually be kind of perfect timing, you know, in terms of the way the numbers are going, because there's just not a lot of COVID out there to catch. I know different parts of the country are experiencing different leads as well. So that kind of ties into, you know, if kids are traveling. Uh, but it's going to be so hard to know whether traveling to what the metrics are in that part of the country, you know, if they're going to be um, exposed there, you know, if that kid has had COVID recently, because again, if we're still thinking about herd immunity as kind of being that magic, you know, time where we're not going to see the rapid spread of disease, so many of these kids have had COVID within the prior two months that they're really not even at risk of catching COVID right now. So even if they do travel or go anywhere, you know, it's that there's not like they're going to bring anything home.
Okay. Thank you.
But what about the adults though? And I recognize that I can't.
But let me, okay, so let's take a minute, let's take a pause for a second. Let's hear, let's let other committee members share something and then we can come back and we can ask more of these questions. But are there, is there anyone else who would like to add anything to this conversation?
Uh, I'd like to, um, ask a question. So some of the, uh, children at the Wildwood and the Boutwell are not eligible yet for vaccination. Uh, and I was, Ms. Brown, if you and Dr. Curdo, if you could explain why you are, um, comfortable with, again, this policy uh, despite that, because certainly that's something that some people are concerned about.
Mark, our, um,
Yeah.
kindergarten, um, vaccination rate, um, for both schools combined is 34% for five and up. But.
Yeah. I would say that's probably about what I'm seeing in my practice as well.
But over the last, I mean, in our district this past week, we've only had nine, nine, nine students and two staff. And there is no concentration of positive cases at the Wildwood or the Boutwell.
Yes. And I think the other piece of information that you really want to, you know, kind of think about is that, um, we've, we've, as we've seen, uh, the, the vaccine, um, data develop over time, we're finding that the vaccine really isn't preventing COVID. So it's not stopping anyone from really catching it. The main job of the vaccine is really just to make your symptoms less so. Um, so a lot of like the, you know, when we talk about how, um, you know, a year ago, it was always like push the vaccine, push the vaccine, because that's going to prevent COVID, it's going to prevent the spread, it's going to prevent all of this. It really hasn't amounted to that because, you know, whether you have the vaccine or not, you're still catching COVID, you're just catching milder COVID. So whether or not the kids are vaccinated or not in terms of transmission of COVID, honestly, I don't think it really makes a big difference.
Thanks, Mark. Other comments or questions, um, for, for Becky or Dr. Curdo?
Is it not?
It's not. I'm sorry. But this is, I'll just be, I mean, this is a, this is a difficult seat we sit in, folks. I mean, this is, this is not, I know you think we, we must sit in some ivory tower, which I'm not sure why, but this is a hard place to be in. We all have children of our own. Um, we are trying our best to support. We are getting just as many people sending us emails on the other side. I mean, I know it's hard to believe that, but we're getting, it's a, I cannot explain to you the, the amount that we receive and that we are trying to do our very best to really serve children and our teachers well. I mean, so I'm just asking you to, to bear with us as we have this humongous responsibility that I said two years ago, I don't know why we have this responsibility, because I have to rely on medical professionals, because I do not hold an MD myself. And so I keep trying to make this point. We are doing the very best with what has been dealt to us and we are really trying to consider all of your needs and all of the needs of children. I promise you, from the bottom of my heart, that is where we stand. That is why we have Becky here, that's why we have Mark. Shelley Newhouse, we spoke to her throughout the week. So we're doing our very best. We do need to process this a bit because we are getting bombarded from families who do have immunocompromised children and who are reaching out terrified of what this will mean for their kids. So we're, we're in a lot of different places here. So just try and bear with us as we work through this together. Jessie, you're all set? Mr. Smaha?
Well, I, you know.
And I'm sorry, Mrs. Plowman, you had your hand up too. I apologize.
I mean, I was, part of what I was thinking is, is a little bit about, um, what Mr. Burns was saying, you know, about like this idea of like having, having metrics uh, or whatever. Uh, and I'm not so sure much, I'm not so sure that that necessarily makes sense. Um, I think relying on the experts, like you were just saying, is incredibly important and their, their opinions on this. And from what I hear, you know, from everything that I'm, that I'm hearing, it's, it makes sense. I don't know to keep the policy, to, to change the policy to what is written here. I don't know if maybe to address what Mrs. Burns was saying is, is maybe inserting a metric in there, but something in there that says if under the guidance of, you know, Board of Health, the physician, um, that, you know, we might have to re-inrepose something if, you know, in their expert opinion, we, we might need to re, revisit masks at some point. I don't know if that's a possibility in here, but it's just something to sort of address that. So it's not necessarily having some black and white number in there, but it's having something else in there where if, you know, like I said, like I'm, I'm not a doctor. Um, you know, if, if experts, right, in the field are telling us that there's this new thing and we really need to protect, you know, all families, that we have something in here about that. I don't know if that's a possibility.
Mrs. Plowman?
Um, so I'm just gonna, I, I just want to kind of reiterate where I'm at with this at this point. So I heard Dr. Curdo say that, and I guess this is in response to some concerns that MJ, you're, you're having about immunocompromised students and teachers. Dr. Curdo was saying that to some extent, a mask can protect oneself, right? So if my child has CF and I, I want to send my child to school in a mask, I still have that option. So this policy would not prevent anybody from being able to do that. In relation to Title 12 as well, all due respect, masking is actually preventing a lot of children from accessing. So hearing impaired children are really at a disadvantage. So on the one hand, like yes, I, I might have an immunocompromised child and, and, and I may keep them home from school and that's taking away their access to learning. But I also may have a hearing impaired child who's going to school every day and having to wear a mask and their access to learning is also impaired. So I'm able to see it in both, in both ways. And I, I would urge everyone to try to see it in both ways and in all kinds of ways and not just through the lens that benefits your child. And that, and that is what we are here, that's why we are tasked with this job. So I'm holding that in my space as well. What I do think is important for the community, and we are here to represent the community, is that consistency is important in, in our decision-making. And we have, up until this point, said we are following the DESI guidelines. The DESI guidelines are telling us that this is the The DESI guidelines are telling us that this is the recommendation. I worry that if we tweak that, if we change that, if we tweak the date, if we tweak any sort of iteration of that, we are not being consistent and we, as a board, are not being predictable. And I think that that's not fair to the community. So, I just, I needed to sort of articulate that a little bit.
Point of reference? So, that's why it's left at a local level. DESI set a guidance. It's not a mandate, it's a guidance. And that each district in each community has taken it up, because only they can decide what's best for their schools or communities, because there still is, yes, from what Dr. Curdo says, you know, the positivity numbers, which is fabulous, have gone down. But each community is different, and some are still in that precarious zone, even with the, you know, and hopefully, we can continue the trend. And, you know, and so, that's why it's been left to local boards as opposed to the DESI putting it down as a mandate. So, that's my understanding.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, up until this point, we have, our track record as a board has been aligned with the recommendations at that level.
For the COVID pandemic?
For particularly this topic, yes.
Has it been? Because I thought pretty much that Riley's pretty much says, this is what we suggest. And it wasn't, the problem was, was that it was, there was a lot that had to be, that had to be created and discovered by each superintendent, each school district. That's, yeah, it was general guidance, but it wasn't, it wasn't a structure of which our superintendent could be like, okay, this is what we're implementing. You had to create, create the whole wheel.
There were definitely instances of that. I think with this particular issue, we've actually never been in a position to discuss whether it was going to be optional, whether it was, because it was mandated by DESI and the governor. And so, we actually, we had a couple of times, we thought we had, we thought we were coming in to make that decision, and it was made for us.
Right.
But we never actually have had to make any decision until this very moment, right? This is actually the first time, we've had a couple of meetings we thought we were going to, and then it was mandated. Which I imagine, you know, going back to this date and going back to metrics, when the rates increased so great, the governor made a decision, and then we followed that decision, right? There was never a time where we were like, ooh, Shelley was calling us and telling us you have to, you have to do that. I mean, it was really in line with the state. So, I think what we're saying, what the policy subcommittee is bringing forward to you is to say, we have really talented people at the head of our district in healthcare, and DESI has sent this out as guidance. We have spoken with them, we have met with them, we have talked through all of these scenarios, including vacation week, including the early childhood centers, including immunocompromised kids. And they have all agreed that this is the guidance that they would suggest. And that is, I don't think, any different than what we've been doing throughout this pandemic as best we can.
Even, I mean, I would add, this would, if Dr. Curdo and, you know, the board, if they were recommending something different than this policy, then I think we'd be having a different discussion. But given that they're recommending that we, you know, update the policy to basically remove masking in the schools, I think that's what we should be following, in my opinion.
I just want to make sure that our schools are still accessible to the most.
I 100% understand that.
And it's keeping them open, and it's keeping staff in the classrooms. That's, those are my three primary, equity, inclusion, and the operation of our school district. That's my basis of my concern, and I have no other, there's nothing else that I'm bringing in. But, and so, that's where I, you know, I just want to make sure we do the right, at the right time. And that's what I bring forth to this board, not because, for discussion, because I always, you know what I mean? To broaden my own thoughts and opinion. And I think that's why we all, seven of us, work so well in that realm.
Yeah, I respect that. Jessie?
Well, and one of the things, I wasn't going to say much, because I said it all at the subcommittee meeting yesterday, and then I remembered that half you guys weren't there, so I apologize for that. Two of the things I think that give me comfort in supporting this as it's, more or less as it's written, I know David sent out a piece about the buses that I agreed with, but, and please don't let me put words in your mouth, but at the subcommittee meeting yesterday, you indicated that Wilmington, as a town and as a school system, has more or less followed the trends in the state. So, if there were to be another spike, it would stand to reason that we will see that spike as well. And there's nothing that prevents us from coming back to this policy and saying, okay, much like with Omicron, things are out of control, let's revisit this, right? So, and, you know, hearing, we've talked in this room, we've all gotten the emails about, you know, folks who, no more masks, please, right away. Please keep masks, children immunocompromised. Like, I understand all of the arguments, and I said this to you guys yesterday at the meeting. I have two kids. My older one can't wait to not wear a mask to school. It's like he's thrilled. The little one is going to wear a mask, because he feels safe with it on, because that's what he's used to right now. And I think that, I just take that, my example is sort of what the community is dealing with. There's a lot of folks who don't want to wear them, and I get that. And there's a lot of folks who either have to or want to, and I think they should have that option too. And so, I think this, this policy, as it's written right now, sort of gives everybody that option. And so, if we have to come back at some point and revisit it, fine, but for right now, I'm comfortable with how it is.
I want to go back for just a second to what Dr. Bryson was saying before about the community's outreach to us, because there's been a lot. And so, I want to acknowledge everyone who's reached out to the school committee in the recent days to share their opinions on this issue. And we read every email, we read every comment, and take it all to heart. And regardless of how we vote, we won't please everyone. But that doesn't mean that we haven't heard everyone's voices and that we don't value their opinions. We absolutely do. And so, the way that I kind of think about this issue, the way I frame it, is I think there's a tendency to favor the status quo. And so, since we've been masking for so long, we think that masking is the norm, and any retreat from that posture requires a special justification. And I think that's the wrong way to look at it, that the norm is not wearing a mask. And so, the question is, if we're considering imposing an intervention like this, is that intervention justified? I think that the burden is on the intervention to justify itself with its trade-offs. Which everyone, everything we might do has trade-offs. And so, I think by that standard, that retaining the mask mandate, you know, is not justified at this time. And I think about everything we have and like where we are now, that we have a weekly rapid testing program available to all families. We have the great fortune that children are at very low risk of a serious COVID outcome, lower than many other ordinary risks that we just take in our everyday lives. We have vaccines that are extraordinarily effective at preventing bad COVID outcomes, that are available to all staff and all students with, you know, small exceptions, the biggest one being at the EECs, as we mentioned. And we still have masks for everyone, for any staff member or student who chooses to wear one. And so, I think when we kind of, you know, put this all together, and then high-quality masks, which are very protective. So, putting this all together, and actually, I want to jump back to the Wildwood and the Batwell for one second, because as we acknowledged before, the young students that are under five, you know, are not eligible yet to be vaccinated. But they are already at the least risk of all, of the kids, because they're the youngest. And they also pay the biggest price in the cost-benefit analysis of masking in schools, because the masks are, first of all, they get the least benefit, because they don't mask very well. And the masks are not designed to even fit them well. So, the benefit they get is the least, but then the cost they pay is the most, because masking is most harmful to the development and education of young kids. And so, I think in that regard as well, that an optional masking policy is justified at the EECs as the EECs as well. You know, there are multiple other states that are lifting their mask mandates. You know, DESI is listening to the same experts now that they listened to when they originally imposed their mask mandate in the fall, mask mandate in the fall. And I think that it is time for us to make this change and that we should make it on the first available day, on the 28th.
Thanks, David. Okay. David, will you read that revision to the third bullet, please?
Yes, so, we have to do that piece of housekeeping. So, I move to amend the revised policy by substituting for the third bullet, this is the bullet that is regarding school busing. All students and staff are required to wear a mask on school buses as long as the federal transportation mask mandate remains in effect.
Thank you. First, second.
And if I could just very quickly, there should be a discussion.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, well, no, we'd actually, yeah, there could be a discussion, but I'm just not sure if we're doing this out of order.
No, because you have to amend the policy, before you vote on the amended policy.
Well, is this the first reading? Are we going to have a second reading of this policy?
No, we're.
This is, we're going to vote on it tonight.
We're going to on this tonight.
Unless people, unless someone wants to make a motion to not do that.
Just, I just think that, forgive me, that just breaks from our usual protocol of policy.
It does, however, we will not have another meeting before the 28th.
Next meeting's not till March 28th.
If I may add, you do, there is provision in your policy about the adoption of policies that in emergency circumstances, I believe that this terminology used, you can forego the typical path or procedure.
This is an emergency law? I could see where it could be in stating something of this nature because of the public, of a public health crisis. But removing it is, A, of course, you're removing it because of the numbers that Dr. Curdo just spoke to, you know. I'm not ready to vote, but if the rest, I will say, though, if the rest of the board members, I'd like to digest this. If the rest of the board members are, then I would suggest then follow the, whatever your guidance is, but I'm not ready, not without processing it, so, but thank you.
Go ahead.
So, the, anyway, just the explanation for this is that this change in language then makes the policy a little bit more self- affecting. If the mandate is lifted, then it sort of is immediately addressed, and we don't have to bring the policy as quickly back before us to address the school bus issue. And so, that is the reason for it.
Okay, so, first and the second, all in favor of that revision of that bullet? That's unanimous, thank you. All right. Is there a motion for this policy? Mr. Benelli, is there a second? Mr. Smaha, all in favor? Sorry, wait, any more discussion? I apologize. Sorry. No, okay, all in favor? Not in favor? Abstention? All right, thank you. All right, Dr. Brand? Oh, sure.
Thank you, Dr. Curdo, for your input. It's been greatly appreciated.
You're very welcome.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, Becky. Thank you so much for your input.
All right, we're going to, thank you so much, Becky. Thanks, Dr. Curdo. Did you already hang up?
I hung up.
Sorry. Tell him later, sorry.
Done with Dr. Curdo.
If it's okay with the committee, I'm going to take old business first, skip over the superintendent's report, because we have, Linda Peters is here. She's been patiently waiting for her time. And she's going to join us to share the program of studies updates and approval and the freshman seminar presentation.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
So, my first presentation is the update of our program of studies for the 2022-2023 school year. Many of these updates were proposed, thank you, were proposed at our last meeting by the curriculum team leaders. Some of them, their proposals were for the upcoming year, so I did include those. The first update is that we will update our vision of the graduate pages in the beginning of the program. We also added, with the help of the counselors and Christine Elliott for the template, we added career clusters to start our program. The career clusters are something that our counselors work with, with our students through Naviance. We decided to include those in the program of studies and also include the Wilmington High School courses and extracurricular activities that would relate to the career choices and the college majors. There are some additions to the business technology program. They are adding three courses, Introduction to Computer Programming, Introduction to Web Design, and Digital Literacy and Applied Digital Skills. We are deleting the course Student Technology Integration. We actually are replacing that course with the three courses that we're adding. Our English department is adding an interdisciplinary English 10 course at the CP level. We already have it at the honors level, but we are also offering at the CP level, hoping to have our English 10 and our history, U.S. History 10, become interdisciplinary for most of our students. For Health and Physical Education, we are combining the ninth and 10th Health Dynamics course as opposed to having two separate courses which run two different semesters, and combining our Health 11th and 12th, also replacing the individual Health Dynamics 11th and 12th. Again, those run in opposite semesters. For Mathematics, we are adding an Algebra I honors course, deleting a Math Workshop and Integrated Math 1. And we do have a course description change for Algebra III. Algebra III is a fourth-year math course. We are looking to have more project-based opportunities in the fourth year in all courses. And this is, the course description now offers more project-based topics in that course. Our science additions are Marine Science and AP Physics 2. And we are looking to restructure the course sequence, where all ninth graders will come in to be scheduled for Biology either at the CP or honors level. Physical Science will be an option for a third-year science course in that sequence. It is a possibility, depending on MCAS scores. In Biology, it is a possibility that Physical Science may be an option for our sophomores, depending on these scores. In Social Studies, we are adding an interdisciplinary U.S. History from a Global Perspective to the CP. That's to match the interdisciplinary English 10 course. And we are replacing our World History 11 course with our U.S. History from a Global Perspective 3, which is our third course in that sequence. We are making some adjustments to grade-level offerings. Our Social Studies department has many offerings for electives, but they're usually open to only 11th and 12th graders. They are opening Psychology and Religions to Grade 10 for next year. And World Languages are adding French 1 and Italian 1, so that there are initial courses in those languages as well. And in the French 5 and Italian 5, they are offering those semester courses. We offer them in Spanish, and we're now offering them in French and Italian. Those are our changes.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments?
Clarification, if I could. How much of this sort of falls in line with the presentation from a few weeks ago? And how much of this was maybe already in the works, or is it?
This was all coming from the work that they did in October.
I have to say, in looking through this in preparation for the meeting, I absolutely love the addition of the web design piece and the digital literacy and the applied digital skills. I just, I think that really has been a focus of interest. I think with a lot of the students and, you know, going into the world, there's so much around that applies to these, you know, what encompasses, is encompassed in this programming. And I'm very excited to see that take place.
We hope to enhance that as well.
That's great. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments. One is that I love the new section of the clustering of the courses towards different interests and careers and thoughts that they might have. I think that that's a wonderful thing for them to kind of like start thinking about and then see what course. I think that that's a wonderful thing for them to kind of like start thinking about and then see what courses might help them move in that direction. So I think that's a really great, a really great part of it. I wanted to point out something that I, that I found just a little anomalous, which is that in the description in the program of studies for the new interdisciplinary English 10, which is on page 29, almost the entire description is really just sort of the history part, and there's a tiny little nod at the end to Skills in English Class. But under the history description, there is a much more robust description of reading contemporary novels at the time.
Well, let me check into that, that could be a mistake.
Because it seemed to me that those should be the same description and that the English one should definitely contain the part about reading contemporary, not books and novels of the time, Cold Mountain and, and so on.
Well, I think that the two teachers did this together, so it may be just in the wrong place. So I will check that.
Just wanted to point, point that out, that that should be, I think.
Thank you, though.
Other questions or comments? Um, this is a, an approval, so we do need a vote. So is there a motion?
I move to approve the WHS Program of Studies.
Is there a second? Mr. Benelli, thank you. All in favor? That's unanimous. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great work.
Do we let school committee members audit any of these courses?
Sure. My next presentation is on a proposal that I've been thinking about for a long time. And when we decided to look at our program, I decided that I'd like to try to, I'd like to propose a freshman seminar. I'd like to propose it for all ninth graders, not so much as a requirement for graduation, but just as a requirement to move forward. I'd like it to be a semester course, but depending on the schedule and the scheduling, it may turn out to be something a little different. Could be a quarterly course, it could have quarterly components. It would be staffed with counselors, administrators, curriculum team leaders, and teachers who volunteer to participate in the freshman seminar program. We would like to also include guest speakers, in particular Wilmington High School students, to help or speak to the freshmen. The curriculum would include some of the counseling seminar topics that they already have in our counseling seminars with the freshmen. We would just really expand on those particular topics. We would also like to include a civics project during that time. Our social studies curriculum team leader suggested that, and that would be probably a very, very detailed and very consistent kind of project for the civics project. We do vision of the graduate workshops, and our freshmen will need to have those workshops presented to them. We would like to offer some social-emotional skills during that time, in particular around problem-solving, goal-setting, and decision-making. And again, it's, there is a difference between high school and middle school, and I think that this would help them try to understand that and try to, I guess, get acclimated to the high school life. So the timeline would be for us to, if this is approved, to include this as a course in the 23, 24 school year and to start thinking and planning for the second half of, during the second half of this year and all through the 2022, 2023 school year to develop the curriculum and determine who's going to teach it and where it's going to go from there.
Questions, comments? Mr. Smaha?
I'll say, I, I absolutely love this idea. I think it's going to do a really good job of transitioning those kids out of, you know, to get used to what it's like, you know, in high school. And you're really ticking, oh, you're looking at that curriculum, you're really ticking off like a lot of just important things that can sometimes be overlooked when, you know, there isn't a specific time period for them. So I think that's great. I think the guest speakers to include Wilmington High School students so that they, so students get to hear what upperclassmen have to say, I think is incredibly important, too, so I 100% support this. I think this is fantastic. Thank you.
So of this list of items here, the project, the counseling, the vision, and the graduate workshops and so on, is, is the idea that all of these will be part of it? Or are these potential ideas of what might form the curriculum, or would the idea be that we would hit all of these topics and possibly more?
I, I would hope to hit all of these, but I think it would depend if this is approved, if we start planning it this year, what the curriculum would look like and how it could be timed out and paced. Some of these topics could be handled during our W2 interdisciplinary block. The first half of that block is used for seminars, it is used for class meetings, it is used for presentations. So we could use some of that time for some of these if they can't actually fit into the seminar. But I think the people who will choose to teach it are the ones who probably should make a decision as to what the most important topics are for the curriculum for this.
And what do you see this replacing in the ninth-grade curriculum? Because when I, because I, you know, I look at something like this and it, I mean, these all sound like great ideas, but then there's always a trade-off. So if they're doing this, they're not doing something else. And this is part of what I also think about when we are discussing possible changes to the graduation requirements, that the more we require of this, then the fewer choices they get to make as far as the electives they take.
Well, that's a great question. I, I, part of the, part of the work that we'd like to do and like, like to start this year is evaluating our schedule and possibly looking at revising it so that there are more options, maybe offering eight courses for our students so that they do have an opportunity to take this as well. We certainly have a wide range of courses that we could offer to our students. It's, it all depends, we have to look at numbers, and I think we have to look at a lot of different ways to schedule. I, not saying that our schedule wouldn't handle this, but I don't think every freshman would be able to take it in the schedule that we have right now. So I do think the schedule needs to be evaluated as well.
On that same concern, I wasn't concerned, but, so the blocks right now are eighty, no, 120.
Eighty-four minutes.
Eighty-four minutes. Eighty-four minutes. And so this would be an 84-minute block? As it stands now?
Yes.
Okay.
And if there are scheduled changes or revisions or an evaluation that may change this to be two 42-minute blocks, I mean, it could work out that way. There's all different ways that you can be creative about this. It just is going to take time to, to really work through it and look, look at the different ways that they can be scheduled.
My second question is, have you, and I'm sorry if I miss this. Are the current, have the current freshmen or sophomores talked with you about the design of something like that? Like, was this something that they were wishing they had or something they wanted? Do we know, I guess? Like, are there sophomores who are like, ooh, I wish I had had something like that? I'm just curious.
It really didn't come, this, this idea did not come from students, but it would be probably a good idea to have students on the study group that would actually work through creating the curriculum for the course.
I only have one person in the high school, but I often hear that there's just not, can't take everything they want to take. That if I want to take this, I've got to give up this. And so I'm like, ooh, so I'm a little hesitant to say, yes, let's add one more thing that will make it harder for our kids to. So I just want to make sure this is something that's going to be either really like enticing and valuable for them, where they're just like, thank goodness I have that, or maybe to rethink the timing of it. Like, maybe that, the 84, maybe that's just too much, wait for something like this. I mean, there's probably some other courses, too, that probably maybe don't need to be the 84, and so what if we could be creative? Or you could be creative and sort of including two of those. Like, maybe there are courses that don't need that long, and then there are others, I think, that make really good sense to have that long. So I go back and forth. And then my third point would be, I will say, in my one experience with one child at the high school, that the W2 does seem to be very, very popular and, and a really good time for them to, to work, to, to talk with teachers around the building, to talk with counselor, like, just so I would just be hesitant to take something like this and, and say, oh, we already have this, the W2 will kind of use that time. So that's my only, my only thoughts as I'm thinking through this with my vast experience.
The freshman seminar could be, the freshman seminar could be half of the W2 block.
Yep.
I mean, that's a possibility. I think there are different things to look at, and that's why I'd like a study group forum to actually look at this and, and look at the schedule and look at, if our schedule stays, how could we manage it? So I do, I do think it's something to look at, it's something to, to investigate and research.
I, I really love it. I think these are topic areas that students coming into high school might not choose, but I think would really, really benefit from. And so if it can fit, I, I agree, I don't think it needs an 84-minute block necessarily, but if it can fit within a schedule and creatively work out, I think this could be very beneficial to incoming freshmen, for sure.
No.
This is just informational.
It's informational, I mean, if anything, I guess, a sense of the committee. But, you know, as you can see here, the time, the timeline and the thoughts around trying to proceed with planning for next year. And I'm sure this is not, this is reflective of who Ms. Peters is, obviously forward-thinking even as she's also thinking about the.
Don't say that R-word.
I don't want to hear it. I don't even want to recognize.
It is reflective of that, and, and so I thank her certainly for her, her wider thinking and the innovation, if you will, here for, and I think, I'm sure your comments have been well-received. There are a couple of other items related to sort of a continuation of the previous presentations around the high school that include both GPA as well as the return to the program recommendations, or sorry, the graduation requirements. Those are not here for this evening, we'll, we'll, we'll return to those at a future meeting and continue the conversation around sort of thinking ahead. But thank you. Ms. Peters, as always, for your leadership.
It's a program change, so it could possibly require a vote.
Oh, I think eventually would need to.
Once we get to that point.
I don't think it needs to.
Not right now, though.
No, the memo.
No, you're right.
And actually, I was going just to say on the, on the, on the timing that, I mean, I think that I, we want to, we'd like to see like, as it progresses and as the details get fleshed out, we have a skeleton and an idea here. And, you know, the more that we learn about like, well, here's how we might do it, here's how we might do the schedule, then we can be in a better position to vote on it. At the same time, I don't want them to like spend an entire half of a year working on something, and then we get to June and we just say, no, no, we don't like this idea. So I guess I don't know, the Goldilocks time, somewhere in the middle.
I hear you. Jay?
Just, just to clarify, it says approval on the first. So.
Mine says, mine says approval by May.
Right.
Oh. But not tonight.
Right.
Okay. Put it through June, right? That would be.
Thanks, Jay, for.
Do we have that?
We're going to move right into the superintendent's report, Dr. Brand. Into the concise superintendent's report.
All right, last but not least.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
There are, there are five items on here, but you'll be glad to know that the chair will just really address one. Really all informational.
She wants that. But.
To draw your attention, there, there is, there is a number of informational items, and they're here really for your information only, starting in order 7A. The 2020-21 Performance Report would beg the question, I'm sure, by many as to why that's here. But this is, as is customary, as part of the town, we put together, the school department and the other departments in town put together a report that is included in the, what's it called? Sorry, the tangential report, and we have always done that, and so it's a year in review. It's sometimes a little bit difficult, a little bit challenging to produce that product. But I share this here with you for, A, your information, and B, to share with you a new design, a new approach that we've taken. And I want to, I want to extend my thank you to Ms. Elliott, who really, who really took the lead on putting together this. We took a look at some other performance reports from other school districts, not necessarily just in Massachusetts and around, and really wanted to try and come up with something that was, had a high level of readability and had the opportunity to spotlight the many good things that are happening. We typically in the past sort of conformed with, you know, not, not really high readability, shall we say, in terms of the information that was presented. And we also didn't necessarily have a consistent approach across all eight schools. And so we think as a first pass, this, that is helpful and goes in that direction, but certainly would love any feedback that you have as we think about this going forward. But we think we have a template that works, so it is informational only. Item, do you want me to stop? 7B, 7B Program Review Update for you is there for your information and to keep you apprised of the, of the work that has transpired over the last couple of weeks at the middle school level. 6C, the MSBA Updates, this is the one presentation tonight that we have, Ms., so are we there? This is, nope, not that one. No, the Wildwood.
Oh, yeah.
7C? Sorry, I know.
7C.
I'm monkey tonight.
This is a presentation that was shared with the Finance Committee last night, but to take, to take the opportunity, knowing that we have some members of our community who perhaps don't necessarily watch the Finance Committee meetings, but that of the school committee, I want to, do want to take a few moments to draw attention to that. This is a presentation, of course, as always, it'll be available on our website and specifically part of the Wildwood aspect of our website. What I shared last night with the Finance Committee was some information regarding the background of this project, and we want to continue to make sure that the awareness is there amongst members of our community for this and this article that is also included in the packet here. You can see the background, and this committee obviously is well-aware of the developments that have transpired with activity really ramping up towards where we're at and where we're headed with the MSBA program. It is, as has been mentioned a number of times, a really important opportunity to bring to the attention of our community. And it is just that, it's an opportunity with MSBA to try and move forward and attend to our building needs throughout the district, specifically at the elementary level. You know, the rationale for this is shared last night with the school, with the Finance Committee. As many are aware, the Wildwood School really is at the end of its useful life. We have six aged elementary schools, and ultimately, at the end, I continue to believe that we were invited in as one of the few communities that were out of 71 because we demonstrated the need that we have. And that is in the culmination of the six schools. And so to that end, this is, as mentioned, an opportunity, and it can't be underestimated. This does not come around all the time for communities. There are communities who apply and apply and apply and sometimes still don't get in. We were fortunate, but based upon the pitch that we did, to be invited in the first time around. This is a lot of, a lot of sort of moving parts and information in here, but this is an overview graphically of what the MSBA provides in terms of the sequence of steps. There are just that, if you are a member of, or a community sort of participating, there are certain steps and check marks you have to follow, and this outlines just that. They use the term modules, it can get confusing, but there's a pathway, there's a sequence that communities have to, have to attend to. This is another graphical representation of sort of where we're at right now, and that's what is known as Module 1 or the Eligibility Period. We began this July 1 officially when the clock for the Wilmington submission in this program started. We have 270 days to fulfill a number of different aspects of it, of which we are continuing to work through. And this is, this is representative of where we're at and where we're approaching, and that is the X marks the spot, the seeking of the authorization of funding by the town at the special town meeting to support, to support the funds of $1.2 million to allow us to embark upon the next phase, which is known as the feasibility study. There are a number of aspects that really underscore the importance of this. And again, to take this opportunity for members who are watching, and members of the community watching, a special town meeting has been called for March the 8th, 7 o'clock PM at the Shriners Auditorium. called for March the eighth, seven o'clock PM at the Shriners Auditorium. It is essential that we have members of the community come out to support this. And it is only with the support for the appropriation of funds that we can, in fact, move forward. So what happens if the funds are appropriated, as we are hopeful that they will be, this slide outlines just that. It allows us to move forward in the modules and moving forward into the feasibility study, as was mentioned. This is where we bring on board experts in the field. We form a project team. We, we hire an owner's project manager or OPM to really get involved and work on behalf of Wilmington to explore the options that may be before the community as it relates to construction and or renovation of our elementary schools. The, this, this slide just sort of expands upon the steps that come following the successful vote and appropriation of funds. I think just most, finally, but certainly most importantly, what happens if the funds are not secured. And in order of that sequence, first and foremost, our, our partnership with MSBA for the Wildwood project would come to an end. It is the expectation of the MSBA that communities are in this partnership program, will continue to move forward. There's no exceptions, as we understand that, to that. We need the appropriation of funds by the town of Wilmington to move forward. If that does not transpire, not only are we out of the MSBA program and this opportunity with the Wildwood, but we are left to figure out as a town and a community what the viable options are. And most importantly, fiscally, those expenses would fall directly on the town and residents. So there are some significant implications. So again, that's the, that was the presentation last night. And I'm thankful to the finance committee who supported that, as many are aware. We actually have the actual article, or sorry, the warrant, I guess is the right terminology, that's in the packet. And the finance committee did, I'm not sure if I have the right terminology, but they approved this to move forward to special town meeting. So that's where we're headed. And then finally, the last item tonight in the superintendent's report is just informational. Also, the SEEM FY twenty-three budget that was recently approved by the SEEM Board of Directors. And that is it for me tonight.
Thank you. Very well done. Okay. Questions or comments? Yep, Mr. Rexo.
David Sanus first.
Sorry.
I only want to comment that we need people to come to this special town meeting and advance the article. And please put it on your calendar. Pull out your phone right now if you're watching. And March eighth, at Shriners Auditorium, before you schedule something else for that night, put it on your calendar, tell your friends, and make sure to come out. Because this is a really important opportunity that we, we can't miss.
Thank you. Jessie?
I was going to say that, so I won't say that again. I also wanted to echo what Dr. Brand said, and, you know, thanks and appreciation to the finance committee for passing this along. Can I ask, and you may not know the answer to this question, forgive me, it dawned on me last night after the finance committee meeting. And I hope it doesn't come to this point. If the town were to not support this, is there like a cooling off period? Can you then at some point reapply to the MSBA program? Or is it just the Wildwood project, that's it, too late? I, I just, I wasn't, certainly hope it doesn't come to that. I just wasn't sure.
I don't believe there's a cooling off period, but there's certain deadlines to submit statements of interest. So we'd have to submit six statements of interest again. And they have certain cutoff dates when it has to be submitted, so it gets into a board meeting for the MSBA, so.
And so understanding that an average MSBA project is five to seven years, we're already tacking on a few additional years to the end of that if we don't stay within this sort of current timeline. So I think, I bring that up just to underscore the importance of this. Like, we are, this is, we need to get this done. So, thank you.
So David, but then I saw Melissa, so I'm going to go Melissa and then David, because Melissa hasn't spoken yet on this. So I'm trying to be fair. Melissa?
Oh, thank you. Dr. Brand, can you, can you address this, the issues of concern in the community right now about the safety of the Wildwood until we get to this point? Because I was part of that community forum. I, I listened that evening. You and Mr. Hooper did address that. And I know that there is a lot going on behind the scenes. I do feel like informing the community one more time about that, just so people understand that this is not something that is being overlooked right now. It's something that the district is really carefully considering and is concerned about.
Yeah. Well, can I just add, and when, I've spoken to quite a few people this week about their, their surprise that this has just suddenly happened. And I've been trying to explain to many community members that this has actually been in progress for some time. I mean, we're dating back quite, yeah, say two years. And that when you came into our district, this became a priority of yours immediately. And so I've been trying to help people understand that. I think it's hard because I think some people, for the first time, are, are seeing these pictures now all over social media. And they're like, how did this happen? And I just want to, so, so while you talk through sort of where we are now, I think if we could just provide this idea of how long this, this process that we're in now, we started quite some time ago. I mean, you had these concerns, and we're trying to, we're trying to be proactive as opposed to, we saw these pictures and we decided to apply to MSBA. I mean, that is just not, right? Those of us sitting here who have watched this unfold know that. But I think it's hard for those who are just now tuning in to an event, they're like, how did this happen? So I think if you could add that in, that would be helpful.
Pressure.
Sorry.
Are you going to, are you adding something?
Quickly.
I just wanted to talk about that timeline a little bit, but I can wait till
Okay. I thought you were going to say end while you're doing that.
Okay, can I just add quickly, but because, just so people do understand that, that timeline, that the, the issue with the Wildwood was identified the very first year that Dr. Brand began here. But there's no possible way to, the, the, the SOIs are due in April. There's no possible way to actually submit them that year. So they were submitted the earliest possible time the following year. And then we were accepted into the program. The year after that, there was a delay because of the pandemic of how the MSBA was working. And we are now in the year after that, going through the process. So there is no more quickly that we could have, as far as the MSBA part, MSBA, there's no more quickly that we could have done this. It was the first opportunity we had to apply, we did, and then here we are.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Because I think that clarifies a lot of misperception. And, and, and I think that misinformation that is, is being flown all around. And I think that it's, I think it's important that we address that here tonight.
So a, a couple of things to, to add and to clarify. So first off, certainly well aware that many of the community have raised their concerns. I have received, I know a number of emails, I know, I think some of you have as well. We're actually working right now on a, on a communication piece that I anticipate to be able to go out to the community tomorrow to try and address some of these. But to take this opportunity, first off, first off, based upon the information that we have before us right now, we, we believe and know with confidence, again, based upon the information we have right now, that the school is safe to occupy. The board of health, the director of board of health of Wilmington has recently visited the school and has done a walkthrough. Anything that she believed needed to be addressed has been or is in the process of being addressed. If we had reason to believe that that school was not safe, or should such information materialize, we will not continue to occupy that building. It's as simple as that. Number two, it's certainly recognized that there's a growing interest in terms of, well, why are we still there, period? The acknowledgement of the MSBA program is a long period of time. And even if we are still hopefully able to move forward, nothing's going to transpire in short order. And that, and that's understood. The reality is, is that without impacting other schools, we don't have the space, from my understanding of sort of our spatial needs across the district, just to relocate all of the staff, students, and programs from the Wildwood. We, you know, I know people's attention's going to our enrollment's dropping, we must have a whole wing of a building that's free. We don't. And, well, that's not to say that we couldn't make accommodations. It would impact the operations of other schools in some way, shape, or form. It's to that end that you may recall an item that we put forth through the budget process, which I think was last year. A capital plan that was in the order of, I think, eighty thousand dollars that you supported and in which the town supported, to put, to put out a request for proposal or qualifications, an RFQ as it's called, to seek a third party to help the community, the district, the town, study options, spatial options for the Wildwood programs and services, should we need to vacate that building. Or, worst case scenario, should something, we didn't know that at the time, you know, should, we didn't, we weren't in the MSBA program at the time. So should that, you know, and the MSBA has come on board, but that may, if that doesn't materialize. And so that proposal, request for qualification, sorry, I think has been or is soon to be pushed out by the town manager. It's under his purview, I guess would be the right way to say it. And that will help, you know, generate options for the community to consider. Whether that is somehow relocating Wildwood to other schools, but with additional space modulars, let's say, added. Whether that's exploring other venues that, and this happens to communities sometimes, schools have to close and they have to relocate staff and students. So that's not, I just want to clarify that, that that's not in response to any of the increased focus in the Wildwood. That was a capital item that we put forth a year ago. Yeah, a year ago.
Two years.
Sorry, was it two years ago? Okay. So that's where we're at right now. More communication to come.
Mrs. Brand?
So that, you've touched upon a, probably a couple of points that I was going to ask you, and which is still a concern of mine, especially if the town and parents and families and staff and the community does not come to this March eighth, or there's not a good representation, the, the what-ifs. Because you talk about having close the school, which and I, Wildwood is, we're getting there. And it's not an easy conversation to have, but it's a necessary one. And it's, it's planning. Because even if we are, we are fortunate to have the town support this endeavor, that school's not going to last the, the timeframe in which a building, the new building will take. And so, you know, and of course comes down with costs associated with that. You talk about moving students and staff into other buildings, talking about modular, which I know that, you know, you've been proactive in just getting pricing because you, you want to approach this mindfully, you know what I mean, weigh all the options that we have. But I guess on March eighth, I guess we will have to figure out Plan B regardless as to what that looks like as to, you don't want to wait to, you know, wait for a Friday when sort of like Wildwood has to close and what are we going to do with Monday?
Yeah, I would just add one thing. Regardless of the outcome on March eighth, we are working on Plan B. And that Plan B is through that request for qualifications.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
If I could just, so that, that request was, it was in June of twenty, but for the FY twenty-one year. So I said two years, it's one year, two years, whatever it is, but it, it's, it's been in the works.
Thank you.
I just, I'd just like to just, this, and Wilmington has, has pushed off building schools for like fifty-two years was the last time an elementary school was built in Wilmington. And I can't impress upon the community to come out on the eighth. We are, we have this great opportunity with the MSBA, who was going to offset funds for this school. If it gets voted down, or not enough people show up to get quorum.
What is that number?
One hundred and fifty. So that's, that's a huge, huge problem. We can't keep pushing this stuff off. We have to tackle it now. And right now, with this opportunity with the MSBA, if we don't take advantage of this, if this doesn't get approved, okay, we're looking at a much, much greater expense down the road, like much greater. What's the, the MSBA typically offsets by how much? Do we know the percentage? It's
High school was about fifty percent, but from understanding, the reimbursement rate's much lower, but still it's something.
But still, it's going to be a significant percentage. And if, if we, if, if it doesn't work out on the eighth, we're in, if we, if people think that the Wildwood is in trouble now, like if that's didn't get approved, we're in much, a much, much worse scenario here. So I can't impress upon how important the eighth is.
Kind of following up on Jay and Jessie's comment earlier about, what about reapplying at another point? We can, but if you look at it from the MSBA's perspective, why would they invite us in a second time for the same project, which has already been demonstrated not to have the support of the community? So it's, it's hard to imagine that if we tried again, that aside from just like the delay being bad in itself, but, you know, there'd be no reason, no reason on their part to invite us in. And a very key part is to make sure that the project has support. The MSBA won't be happy if they've gone down this far with us and they've already used, you know, their time and resources, and then the project fails because we don't, you know, appropriate the funding that we're going to set. So it's not just that it would take longer, but we can't just come back with the same project and not going to invite us in again.
Exactly. I think that's, I think that's the point I was trying to make. So thank you for clarifying my comments.
And which is why, from the very beginning, when we started in twenty, it was in twenty nineteen, we had to, they were very, you have to get approval. You have to know that your town manager and your select board is on board with this. They have to support this. There's no, we couldn't just go as a school committee and say, oh, we want a new building. And so they every, they really do checkpoints all along the way. Where I remember, two years ago, I was sitting in meetings with Jonathan Eaton and it was the MSB. And they were trying to basically see, sometimes I'd leave the meetings, I'd be like, what was going on there? But I think they were trying to get a sense of, are people really support, is a school committee really supportive of this? Are the selectmen really supportive of it? Like, we're spending a lot of time and money on this. So to get to this phase in itself means we've already shown them a very large commitment. And now this next piece is sort of, okay, wait, we're going to go into this next piece. So if we don't have your town's support, we're out. I mean, it's so, it's so, having seen this, like having, sitting in those, I'm like, oh, I, I understand this so much more deeply now than I would have if I had just been watching. Like, oh, how hard is it to go ask for a new bill? It's, it's actually very, very complicated. So one hundred and fifty people is quorum. We start at seven o'clock. They will wait till there is a quorum there. If you can't come and leave, you have to come and stay. And then, this is the only item right on the agenda that evening. So, okay. Anything else? All right. I have no idea where we are.
Subcommittee report?
Thank you. Are there any subcommittee reports?
I, I
Or any other, I'm sorry, any other?
I, the WEF met. And good news is that Analog Devices has approved a ten thousand dollar grant for WEF for this year, which is wonderful.
Fantastic.
The board is working very hard at securing additional money through, through grants like that. And also an upcoming alumni fundraising event, which sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun and more, more information to come on that. And the WEF is accepting grant applications, requests from district staff and teachers. And so they're just sort of behind the scenes, working really hard. The, the next meeting date was March eighth, but obviously we're rescheduling that so that everybody can attend a special town meeting at seven PM. And that's really all.
Any other subcommittee report?
Policy subcommittee met yesterday.
Already talked that through. Good.
Any correspondence?
None this evening.
Future school dates, we have March first is the school budget presentation to the finance committee, seven PM at Town Hall. A week later is the special town meeting, Wildwood MSBA vote, seven PM, Shriners Auditorium. That is for everybody. March ninth is our next regular session meeting here in this room at seven PM. The March first, we do want school committee representation there.
Yes.
Yes.
The budget, yes.
Yep.
Yes.
I, as I stated, I do teach on Tuesday evenings. So, and I
I, as I stated, I do teach on Tuesday evenings, so, and I obviously canceled my class for March 8th.
You're saying not on March 8th, you're...
No, I am not teaching on March 8th, but I am teaching March 1st, so if...
The time, again?
It is 7:00.
7:00, yeah. I can be there. Great. So if you can have, I think at least to have four, I think, is great, a decent representation. Great, great. Perfect. Yeah, okay. So it looks like most people will be there, Tracy. Excellent. All right. If there is nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Fenely?
I'm moved.
Smaha, thank you for your second. All in favor? Good night.
Good night.